I'd like to call the December 5th, 2024 Oak Ridge Town Council Meeting to order. We start out with the invocation. We have the distinct pleasure of Claudia Whitaker, who is a member of the Special Events and also is a longtime resident. To give us the invocation, please stand as you're able.
Let's pray. Joy to the world, the Lord is come. At this time of year, we thank you, God, for the precious gift of your Son. As we celebrate, we remember that many have suffered losses this year. Our neighbors in western North Carolina are some of those who have lost loved ones, homes, and jobs. Comfort them in your everlasting arms and show them your love. We in Oak Ridge are grateful for our wonderful town staff, our town council, and the many volunteers who faithfully share their time and talents to make this a great place to live. As we serve each other, we need the important qualities of respect for one another, forgiveness, and kindness that only you can provide. Thank you for being a God who never fails. We put our hope and trust in you. In Jesus's name, I pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the citizens of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next, we have the approval of the November 7th regular meeting and the November 7th closed session. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. First item we have is a resolution, proclamations, and announcements. We have an Arbor Day proclamation acknowledging those who have helped to reforest the town. It's very fitting that our name is Oak Ridge and that Oak Ridge comes from the presence of oak trees in town. So I'd like to read this proclamation. There are several people in here that we'll be mentioning, and afterwards, I'd love to have you guys come up and we can take a picture. Whereas in 1872, a special day called Arbor Day was set aside for the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce erosion, lower heating and cooling costs, moderate temperatures, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, increase property values and beautify communities, and whereas many mature trees have been lost in Oak Ridge by the early 1980s, and whereas Oak Ridge resident and Oak Ridge Military Academy alumnus Frank Whitaker presented the idea to plant trees in the academy campus and along NC 150 in 1982 to the Oak Ridge Community Center, the parent organization of the Oak Ridge Horse Show, who agreed to underwrite the purchase of willow oak seedlings, and whereas the Oak Ridge Garden Club agreed to help maintain and in 1985 assisted in transplanting of the then six-foot-tall trees. They were aided by the Oak Ridge Fire Department, who furnished water, and whereas many individuals were also involved in the tree planting effort, including Miles and Jane Foy, Gary Blackburn, Spencer Sullivan, Jay Bloom, Wayne and Diane Roberts, Isabel Whitaker, Martha Weatherford, Clarence Browning, Frank and Claudia Whitaker, and others. Several property owners along NC 150 also requested trees, and whereas these, those small seedlings have grown into majestic 60-foot-tall shade trees that cover the Oak Ridge Military Academy campus, as well as the front yards of Oak Ridge Elementary School, Oakhurst, the Jesse Benbow House, the East End Park, the East End part of the north boundaries of Heritage Farm Park, and the Oak Ridge Methodist Church Cemetery, and whereas trees, as evidenced by these willow oaks planted along NC 150, are a source of beauty, joy, and spiritual renewal, and whereas the town of Oak Ridge is proud to have been recognized as a Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation since 2017. Now therefore, I, Jim Kineman, Mayor of the town of Oak Ridge, do hereby proclaim December 5th, 2024, as Arbor Day in the town of Oak Ridge, North Carolina, and urge all citizens to recognize Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodland for the well-being of this and future generations and witness wherefore this fifth day of December 2024. It's amazing, you know, what something you guys did several, many years ago as standing the test of time, and we can see that today. So, good job, and I'd like to have you guys, whoever's I've mentioned in this proclamation, I'd love to have you come up and we'll take a picture. You don't stand up behind you?
Yes, yes.
What do you want us?
Okay. Councilman Horton, can you step that way just a tiny bit? There you go. Thank you very much. Perfect. I got them all. Do you got them all? Want to stand right here?
Take the picture.
You're out of practice. You missed the last minute.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Claudia. Thanks, Frank.
We just have a printout of the sheriff's report. There is a report from the Guilford Sheriff's Department in the back listing the crime statistics for our local area. Do we have a report from the Oak Ridge Fire Department? And as always, make sure I don't skip anything.
Evening, everyone. My name is John Nunez. I'm here to tell you guys about all of our incidents that we've had, our call volume, and then at last, and the last thing, the most important thing, I'll give you guys some tips in the end. So this year, we've ran 923 calls so far, as of December 1st. Most of them are medical calls and vehicle wrecks. This month alone, we've ran ADA calls again, which has been mostly medical calls. Our training hours, we've trained over 621 hours so far and counting. And lastly, for the fun part, these are, these are some tips that I came up with that are, I think are very important. So keep candles away from everything that can burn and make sure that they've, they're in a stable holder. Read manufacturer's instructions for the number of lightstands, strands that can be connected. Water your Christmas tree as needed because it can get dry quickly. A dry Christmas tree can burn quickly and fast, or sorry, hot and fast. Make sure trees, trees, make sure trees set, are set at least three feet from all heat sources, like a fireplace. And again, don't block the exits with the Christmas tree. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Next, we have the annual financial audit report.
Hi, good evening. My name is Chad Cook, and I'm an audit director with Forvis Mazars in our traditionally High Point, North Carolina office. We're actually moving to Greensboro next week, new space. Tonight, I'm here to present the results of the fiscal 2024 financial statement audit for the town. So that would be the period from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. Each of you should have a copy of the, of the 2024 annual financial report, which is the financial statements, along with our report to the town council and management, as well as a one-page financial summary. The financial statements have been uploaded to the local government commission through the North Carolina State Treasurer's website, and their review is currently pending. Right now, their turnaround time is roughly two weeks. We'd expect to have any potential comments back from them within the next couple of weeks. We have not received any comments from them in several years, so I wouldn't anticipate any changes to the financial statements, but just like to point out that, that that review process does have, does have to take place before the financials are completely final and approved. As a result of our audit, we are again issuing an unmodified or clean audit opinion. This year, we did not have a single audit or a compliance audit. If the town were to expend more than $500,000 in state awards in a fiscal year, or more than 750 in federal awards, you're required to have separate compliance audits where we're looking at compliance with those grant programs. The town did expend more than 750,000 this year in federal program dollars because of the ARPA funding. However, there's sort of a one-time carve-out rule that the OMB has, has put out there where you can have an alternative compliance examination engagement, which is much less in-depth than a, than a single audit, if your federal expenditures excluding your ARPA money is less than 750, which is the case for the town. So that, that is due at the end of March, and so there will be a separate engagement coming for that. We're probably going to get the contract together this month. Most likely, the work will be happening next month. But just like to point that out, the town did, did kind of exceed the federal threshold, but because of that carve-out, you know, there's not, not a compliance audit within this, this set of financial statements. Tonight, I'm planning to cover the financial information included in the one-page financial summary that was passed out before the meeting, which really just includes high-level financial information as of June 30th, 2024, as compared to the year-end and June 30th, 2023, and then I've got just some comments prepared as regarding the changes you might notice there. However, I would like to point out that one of the reports provided, which is titled "Report to the Town Council and Management", that, that just contains required communications at the completion of our audit. I would encourage the members of the town council to, to review and read that document, as it does contain important information, you know, just related to our audit process and, and the results of the audit. One other thing I'd like to point out is that there is a data input workbook that we have to fill out at the completion of the audit. It gets uploaded to the LGC with the financial statements, and within that document, there's this tab that auto-populates that's, it's a tab titled "Potential Financial Performance Indicators", and should anything kick out on that tab as a result of the inputs, you have to provide a response to the local government commission. The rule is, I've got 45 days to communicate those to you, and then you guys have 60 days from that date to respond to the LGC. Sam's already been briefed on those, and I believe actually one of those is going to be addressed a little bit later this evening in the, in the financial update, but, but there is one other that's going to require a response, and so I'm sure Sam is going to be in, in touch with you all regarding, you know, putting together that response for that. So as I mentioned, we're going to go through the, the financial highlights or financial summary. We'll start at the top. You'll see Roman numeral one, which is cash and investments across all funds of the town. So cash is down significantly compared to this time last year, so down about 4.9 million dollars. It's really just a timing issue. At the end of last year, there was a, there's, there's a 4.6 million dollar decrease that's all within the Heritage Farm Park Capital Project Fund. And so you may recall, last year, towards the end of the year, the town was holding debt proceeds of about $3 million, as well as ARPA funds of 1.6 million, which were expended during fiscal 2024 for the Heritage Farm Park Capital Project, and so that's, that's really what's driving the majority of the decrease there. The, the second Roman numeral two, general fund, available fund balance. You'll see that that's a 2.19 million or roughly $584,000 decrease from, from 2023. That's largely due to capital project expenditures that were paid for by the general fund this year, for which reimbursements are outstanding at, at the end of the year. So there, there's a $272,000 reimbursement that's, that's outstanding. Actually, I think that portion has now been received, but as of June 30, 24, it was outstanding for the farmhouse community center, and then there was also $107,000 related to the water tank project, or water tower project, rather, that, that was outstanding as well. So those, those couple of items, you know, the revenue had not been reflected in the general fund because the cash did not come in within 90 days of year-end, so it's causing sort of a temporary drop in the, in the fund balance. Roman numeral three is the general fund revenues and other sources on the budgetary basis. The first item being ad valorem or your property taxes, which is the, the largest, you know, traditionally the largest source of the town's revenue. It's at 1.19 or roughly a 4.7, 1.19 million, which is roughly 4.7% increase over fiscal '23. The property tax rate did remain flat, and so the, the increase in the revenue is really just driven by $75 million increase in valuations across the town. So, you know, new developments coming online increases the tax base, which, which, you know, obviously drives up the, the property tax revenue. The second line, unrestricted intergovernmental revenues at a million 19,000, which is a roughly 3% increase. Couple items that, that drove the increase there, between the ABC distribution and also the beer and wine excise tax, those two were up a combined 17,000, and then the utilities franchise taxes were also up about 16,000. So between those two, that, that pretty much makes up the, the increase. For restricted intergovernmental revenues, this includes grant funds that are running through the general fund in fiscal '24, so it's at 300,000, which is a, you know, a large increase over, over the prior year. That's made up of approximately 230,000 of grant funds for the water tank project, as well as 70,000 of county grant proceeds for, for park improvements. So that's, that's the two, the two items that are running through the general fund this year, leading to that increase. Permits and fees are also up this year, so up about 67% or $19,000. There was a $16,000 increase in planning and zoning fees that, that's really driving that, that increase. The last couple items, a little bit smaller, but you'll see investment earnings are at 117,000. That's just the interest earnings on the town's cash accounts, and then miscellaneous revenues, which includes basically everything else that doesn't, that doesn't fit into those other buckets, and, and that's really fairly consistent with the prior year, you know, within, within 3% of the 23 numbers. So overall, revenues were up 429,000 or roughly 18.4%, although I will say a lot of that is, you know, grant revenue related to some of those projects that will be, you know, temporary. Roman numeral four is the general fund expenditures and other uses. We've got it broken out into a couple different departments. So we've got culture and rec, so think parks, and then we've got general government. You'll see the general government is up about 59,000 or 5.7%. That's, that's really being driven by an increase in personnel costs, which increased about $45,000. Outside of that, you know, the remainder of the costs were, were fairly consistent with the prior year. Culture and recreational, that's where you'll see, you know, much, a much larger, larger increase, and again, that's due to the capital projects ongoing with the town. So up at, up to 1.46 million this year versus 705,023. The increase is due to, there was a $769,000 increase in capital outlays for park-related projects and improvements, including, you know, new playground equipment at Heritage Farm, Heritage Farm Park, also costs for the farmhouse community center project, and then, and then just new park equipment. Debt service, you'll see is, is down quite a bit this year. You may remember, last year, there was a payoff of, of a loan related to the Whitaker property. This year, there's the $313,000 is, it's solely made up of the, the annual payments required on the Truist loan, which is for the Heritage Farm Park project. And then lastly, transfers, there were no transfers this year. In, in 2023, you may recall, there was a $50,000 of seed money that was transferred out of the general fund and into the water fund, so that was not required again in fiscal '24, so that's why you'll see that, that go to zero. Last couple figures at the bottom, in, under Roman numeral five, the percentage of available fund balance to budgetary basis expenditures and other uses within the general fund. It's at 75.96% this year versus 91% in the prior year. That's, that's a very healthy number. The average of similar units provided by the LGC is about 63%, and the, the way that they look at is that is kind of by population. So think about other towns across, across North Carolina with a similar population, average around 63, so certainly exceeding the average. But then other things to think about are that, you know, the, the figure's a little bit deceptively low this year because of capital project expenditures that are running through the general fund, which are not expected to recur, right? So you're not, you're not going to continually have capital project expenditures within the, the general fund. So anyway, anyways, it's 70, it's 76%, it's, it's a very healthy figure. And then lastly, the property tax collection percentage is at 99.79%, which is very high, versus 99.74 in the prior year. The LGC considers collection rates that are below 97% to be a potential performance indicator of concern, and so you're, you're certainly well above, above that limit. That's really all the comments that I had prepared, but certainly happy to, to answer any questions about, you know, financial information or anything, you know, as far as the audit process goes. Be, be happy to, to address that now.
Counsel, any questions? Sam makes sure things bore, is, are boring, so we're happy with that. All right. We need to do anything to accept this or anything like that? Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Next, we have two public hearings. Let me just give you an overview of how public hearings work. Basically, we open it up for public comment, 20 minutes for people who want to speak in favor of the, of the item, 20 minutes for, for people who want to speak in opposition, and if both sides talk, we give each side five minutes to, to do it. After that, we go into council, council discussion, and then council decides what they're going to do. So the first item is text amendment to chapter 30, article four of the Oak Ridge Code of Ordinances. Who would like to introduce that? Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, this is an ordinance to give us the ability, or give the town council the ability to appoint members of the Planning and Zoning Board to become the Board of Adjustment. And that's about as, as, as simple as that. It's something that we've talked about for many months, among the, with Planning and Zoning Board, with the, what currently exists of our Board of Adjustment, and also with all of our town council members as well. If there's any questions, I'll...
Any initial questions before we open up for public comment? All right. I now open up the 20-minute period for anyone who wants to speak in favor of this text amendment. Hearing none. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this text amendment? Hearing nothing, I'll close the public comment and open it up for council comments. Any council comments? Like anything? This basically just, will effectively dissolves the Board of Adjustment as a separate standing committee and makes it basically part of planning and zoning, or it was made up of Planning and Zoning Board members. The Board of Adjustment meets about once, once a century, so it's always difficult to keep it staffed. So we decided that it would make a lot of sense to maybe use the Planning and Zoning Board members as similar members to Board of Adjustment to keep that from the, yes?
That's correct, Mayor, but just to clarify, what these amendments do is give the council the option, three options, actually. It can continue having a separate BOA as we've had. It can serve as the BOA itself, or thirdly, as is actually proposed now, to effectively fold the BOA into P and Z, subject to membership criteria for the BOA. But when, in serving as BOA, the roles are completely separate. The BOA is an agency of the, is a statutory agency, filled by appointment by this council, but it's a statutory body with very specific duties, and its decisions are appealable to the Superior Court. It's not an advisory board. So even though the same persons would be serving in the advisory capacity of P and Z, on those rare occasions currently, we're blessed with not having many BOA issues these days, we have in the past, they will put on very different hats, and the training will be very important, so that when that happens, and the separate rules already exist for BOAs, they'll be able to implement those, I hope seamlessly, when that time comes.
Thank you. Yes. Any other comments?
I'm just grateful our Planning and Zoning Board has embraced this new role because it does involve being trained in quasi-judicial procedures, and, you know, I think they hope that the BOA won't meet very often, but I'm very grateful to them.
John, did you have something? Yeah. Following up on Mr. Thomas's comments here, there were comments when we first introduced this and had comments or conversations about it. We were provided with a matrix that divides the duties of planning and zoning and the Board of Adjustment, and with that maestris, you can see that there's no overlap between the two. One of the concerns was they would hear their own appeals, which just will not happen. The way everything is set up, there's an absolutely clean separation of duties. I think the, the one thing, and again, referring to Mr. Thomas, that once we get through the training, that the likelihood is, to make it as clean as possible, is that you wouldn't see planning and zoning and Board of Adjustment meeting in the same meeting. In other words, changing hats. The likelihood is, is that there would either be a planning and zoning meeting, or a Board of Adjustments, or there would be two meetings that would be scheduled, but you're not going to see the hats being swapped at the dais in the same meeting. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that.
Any other comments, questions? If not, is there a motion to approve or deny this text amendment?
I move that we approve this text amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have the revision to the thoroughfare Collector's Street Plan. Is Mr. Taylor going to introduce that also? Again, this is a public hearing, so Mr. Taylor will introduce it, and then we'll have the period of time for public comment.
Our, the Metropolitan Planning Organization that we are a part of with Greensboro, Summerfield, Pleasant Garden, and as parts of Rockingham County, presented to us a thoroughfare Collector's Street Plan for us to review. Staff reviewed this, made several recommendations back to the NPO to do. We held a public hearing on this with our Planning and Zoning Board last month, and they have recommended approval of this to this board, and so the, the efforts of the staff and Planning and Zoning Board are now in front of you with their positive recommendation.
Any initial qualifying questions from council? Okay, we'll open up the public here. Anyone who wants to speak in favor of the revision of the thoroughfare Collector's Street Plan? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? If not, I'll close the public comment session, open it up for council comments or questions or a motion.
Mr. Mayor, so I encourage everybody to take a look at the map that, that shows the new Collector's Street Plan. It is a, a vast improvement. It is a, uh, a vast improvement over what we've had in the past. There's a lot of streets that have been removed for very logical reasons. Um, the, the previous thoroughfare and collector street plan, uh, was good, uh, because it was based on what we believed the, the town may expand into. Uh, some of that came to fruition, other parts didn't. Uh, I think that this is a, a vast improvement of what, what we've had in the past.
Any other questions, comments?
I mean, it's an important update, and I'm, I'm grateful for all the work that's gone into it, but for, for this point in time, it is definitely an improvement.
It basically suggests where a road would go if development occurs. So if the development occurs in the area of these things, the developer would have to pretty much put in these thoroughfare plans so that we connect there, so. If there's no other questions or comments, is there a motion to approve the revision of the thoroughfare collector street plan?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Okay, we're now going into our first public comment session. I know there's a number of people that want to speak on a particular topic. Uh, I personally am inclined to let you speak, but what I would encourage you to do is, uh, don't repeat something someone else has said. So if someone's already said what you're playing on saying, you know, might, you might just say, hey, keep it short, or not say anything at all, and just say, uh, but if there's a number of people, it may be easiest if you just line up, so they don't have to try to pick which hands are gonna go up. So we state your name and address, and the floor is yours for three minutes.
Austin Goldman, 5403 Barrier Ridge Court, Oak Ridge, North Carolina. What I want to speak, uh, briefly, is regarding the Transco Pipeline and the Williams Company, uh, 42-inch pipeline expansion that they are proposing. Uh, our church, Oak Ridge First Baptist Church, 2445 Oak Ridge Road, as well as the United Methodist Church, as well as St. James AME Church, are all in what they call the blast zone, blast zone. Supposedly, if you're in the blast zone, you have 30 seconds evacuation time. The Williams Company, when I looked at their website on evacuation directions, state that you should walk, not drive out of the zone of a gas leak. Okay? Our churches are predominantly seniors, and most of us can't walk a half mile in 30 seconds. So to escape a gas leak, we need to be notified in advance of any catastrophic explosion where no one in the blast zone may survive. If a gas leak is detected in the pipelines in Oak Ridge, who is notified and when? If you are located in that blast zone, we should be notified of any leak, so we have time to evacuate our churches, homes, and businesses ahead of, ahead of a potential disaster. Are, are, are our Oak Ridge Fire Department being notified immediately of any Transco gas pipeline leak? Is there an audio warning system or sirens that's triggered when a gas leak is detected in the, in the Transco pipeline in our vicinity? Is Transco slash Williams Company mandated to immediately notify anyone in the blast zone of an existing leak? So there are a lot of unknowns out there, and that's why I want to raise that to the council, to see if we can get help to get some of these answers.
Adrian Eckenrod, 5679 Timber Traceway, Oak Ridge. Uh, I'm actually entering some comments for Phyllis Anders, who is unable to attend tonight. Um, she's a Oak Ridge Parks Rec, uh, board member with myself, uh, and so since I'm reading her comments, I'll, uh, read directly to make sure I'm conveying her words as she asked me to. I would like to ask the Oak Ridge Town Council members to approve the requests for the parks and recs as is written. After much consideration concerning what we feel is right for our senior citizens that are 65-plus, we've given our tax dollars to Oak Ridge Town for many years and have received little return. When we address senior citizens of Oak Ridge, we are also have several veterans fall in that age bracket in Oak Ridge. The senior adults and veterans are very deserving of this free usage. Until the farmhouse community center policy is put into use, and we actually see the need from our seniors as well as anyone else, we have no idea what should be changed or how. The decision of making premature changes would not be of help to us, as we at this point have no knowledge of the usage or needs of the center. We do agree that changes could and should be made after we know exactly what is needed. We need to remember with, with the act of giving to our Oak Ridge seniors and veterans, the free time is opening the door to a wonderful facility that their families can rent and use in the future. This is a promotional act as well as the right thing to do for our seniors and veterans. This is, uh, also a good way to let everyone in and around Oak Ridge know how useful this facility can be. Uh, we would be opening the doors, inviting people in for business. We do not want the facility to sit empty with little or no usage. Please open your hearts to do this for our seniors and veterans of Oak Ridge.
Hello, my name is Ron Ray. I grew up in Oak Ridge and have lived on my family farm since childhood. In the 1960s, tobacco farms, families working together, and gravel and red dirt roads were the norm throughout the area. Transco came in, laid some pipe, pipes down, and told folks that after they buried the pipe in the ground, they could continue to farm the land as always. Transco said nothing would change. In fact, much has changed, and we have learned that the products transported through our community are very dangerous. Today, Oak Ridge is made up of many fine homes, schools, and churches. It now has many businesses and restaurants that only, not only serve the citizens of Oak Ridge, but outlying communities. The old dusty roads are now major thoroughfares that local and regional citizens travel daily. The pipeline installation would disrupt the daily lives of many people, and the pipelines would forever create a much more dangerous and unsafe community. I currently own 400 yards of the pipeline right-of-way. The land is practically worthless to me. In fact, the pipeline area is a financial liability for me. I disagreeably assume the financial responsibility on an annual basis of paying taxes on the acreage occupied by these pipelines. This land only provides value to Transco, and they neither own it nor pay taxes on it. I recently built a new home near the pipeline area. I was required by the county to maintain a distance of 100 feet from the pipeline right-of-way for my well water. This shows even Guilford County authorities consider the possibility of a gas leak into the well water. My biggest worry, however, is about a gas leak that causes an explosion that wipes out my family, myself, and my home. Burning of fossil fuels that run through existing pipelines are destroying our global environment. Adding additional lines will only hasten the environmental destruction. We should be further developing and implementing renewable energy resources like wind and solar instead of further developing fossil fuel facilities. The technology of the renewable alternatives do work and is available to us today. I do not support the proposed installation of the additional pipelines that will carry methane gas through our town and community. These lines will not make Oak Ridge and our neighboring communities a better and safer place to live and work. These lines will make Oak Ridge a less safe place to live. Let's stop the additional pipelines now, work toward implement renewables, and remove the current 60-year-old metal pipes currently in the ground. Thank you.
Remember your name and address, please.
Name is Ron Ray.
Oh, no, uh, next person.
I'm sorry.
My name is Teresa Spence, 5600 Tanyard Court. Um, I'm also going to talk about the pipeline. I'd like to ask the council to please invite Transco here, to have them discuss the pipeline with this, the new, the new 42-inch pipeline, and also to have a question and answer period, so we can speak to them directly and they can answer our questions directly.
Rachel Annalise Chaney, 58404 Billet Road. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Like a couple of people before me, I would also like to discuss the proposed construction of the Transco Williams Pipeline. As a property owner directly impacted by the proposal to enlarge the pipeline in Guilford County, I am gravely concerned by the intent of Transco and all its related stakeholders to dig up both part of my acreage and those of my neighbors. The proposed pipeline presents a serious threat to the people, property, livestock, and wildlife on every stretch of its path, with no known tangible benefits to the residents of Oak Ridge. In fact, Williams Pipeline denotes in its own literature that it plans to institute incremental increases to pay for this construction. We all know what that means, who's going to pay for it? We are. As a CPA, my goal in all areas of life is to see issues from multiple perspectives and make a rational, well-reasoned choice. To that end, I would have been accepting of this construction if Transco had been transparent, safety-conscious, and more importantly, planning this construction for the betterment of our community. None of these facts are true. Instead, Transco and Colonial Williams are insisting on a proposed pipeline construction that will damage hundreds of properties, dramatically increase the risk of future damage from stacking a pipeline on existing and aging pipelines, and disrupt the lives of thousands for nothing more than another bump to the bottom line. We have no information that this natural gas will be of any benefit to any homeowners, much less those of us here in Oak Ridge. The prevalence of past safety concerns, like the explosion in Appomattox, Virginia, is just insult to injury. In essence, we are being asked to quietly sit by while our properties are dug up, a potentially dangerous pipeline is installed, and our cost of energy increases for absolutely no benefit to this town. I urge you to listen to your constituents and let us make a short presentation on the bigger potential impact of this pipeline than I can say in three minutes. After considering the right information, we would urge you to consider a resolution to block the pipeline. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, my name is Brenda Chaney. My husband, Dwayne, and I live at 5811 Billet Road. For transparency, yes, our property is on the pipeline. We did not know it when we purchased the property. We had a subpar realtor who told us the easement was probably Duke Energy and Piedmont Natural Gas. As the other gentleman indicated, we have approximately 12 acres, and most of it, we have no control ever. They come in and tell me if I can put up a fence, if I can put up shrubbery, they decide with arbitrary rules that I've never been given, which of my trees they're gonna come in and take out. I am not here tonight because it's gonna impact me personally, even though it will. They're gonna take out two of my horse pastures and dig up my driveway. They've not yet told me how I'm gonna get to my house. My concerns are twofold. One, I can't seem to find anybody in Oak Ridge who even knows about this. I run mailboxes and more at Oak Ridge Commons. For the last two weeks, I've gone in personally to assist, and I've asked over and over again, are you aware? Two people even know about the pipeline. One of them because they own a property on the pipeline, the other because he's done contract work for Williams. No one else in Oak Ridge has even heard of the pipeline, much less it's how it's gonna impact them. Which is my other concern? This is not just gonna impact me, it's not just gonna impact my neighbors, where they take more land and more trees out. I did some research. There are currently running through the middle of Oak Ridge, three aging pipes, from the Gulf of Mexico to New York State. Three aging pipes. They want to disturb those pipes to put in a fourth. I don't know if people have researched the danger, or whether they just assume this is gonna be done and we can't do anything, and that's what I've been told by people. There's nothing we can do, and I don't, I don't accept that. Here's research I did for the last 30 years of violations and incidences with Williams Pipeline. I highlighted the big ones. Explosion, death, injury. Explosion, leak, evacuation of a three-mile radius. That's all of Oak Ridge. Explosion, leak, leak! Residents informed three months after the leak. Another explosion, fireball seen from space. I'm gonna leave this with y'all, because I definitely need this to be looked at more deeply. We have people who have moved to Oak Ridge because it's a beautiful quality of life. It's the safest place in Guilford County. None of these neighborhoods are aware of what runs through Oak Ridge. In the blast zone that the gentleman referred to is Oak Ridge Elementary School. You're never gonna get those kids out. So I think at least Oak Ridge needs to be informed of what's going through, and they need to be informed. And what I'm asking is for our council to look at this information and to stand with us as your constituents, and say, we're gonna pass a resolution that says, no, we're not in agreement with this.
Erica Hernandez, 216 Clay Davis Road, and I'm also here to speak against the pipeline. Thank your, thank you, Mayor Kineman and council members for listening to our concerns about the SSAP pipeline here at this town council meeting. My name is Erica Hernandez, I am representing Clean Water for North Carolina, and here are my concerns regarding the pipeline. First, the methane being pushed at high pressure within this pipeline could lead to leaks. An underground leak would contaminate vital groundwater resources and risk well user safety. Even minor pipeline leaks can introduce toxic substances into aquifers impacting well users along the pipeline route, and giving them limited access to safe drinking water. When an aquifer is contaminated with methane or the toxic components of natural gas, the contamination could linger for years and even decades, possibly leading to more safety hazards and complicated cleaning efforts. We've heard from community members about waterways along the pipeline ro, route in Oak Ridge that have not been identified by Transco, but will be affected by construction and possible methane leaks. Protecting our water is essential for public health and the environment. As mentioned before, this pipeline has the potential to rupture, catch fire, and/or explode, putting landowners, churches, and schools along the proposed route in Oak Ridge at risk. Transco holds one of the worst records in not only the number of incidents, but also in terms of fatalities, cost per incident, and gas bills per incident. The SSAP pipeline is also considered a critical infrastructure component in Duke's proposed methane gas projects. These projects lock in long-term reliance on fossil fuels and the region's customers into fossil fuel infrastructure for decades to come, which is delaying the transition to renewable energy. The economic benefits of the SSAP pipeline are largely concentrated in the hands of the pipeline and utility communities. Landowners in Oak Ridge would not see these economic benefits and would bear the health and safety risks that the pipeline inherently brings to the community. Clean Water for North Carolina is opposed to the construction of the SSAP pipeline due to its long-term effects on the climate, public health, and economy. It threatens the safety of well users, landowners, and those who attend the schools and churches within the pipeline's calculated blast zone, such as St. James AMC Church and Oak Ridge First Baptist Church, which are two historic black churches already burdened by proximity to above-ground gas infrastructure. We respectfully ask that you listen to your constituents and allow us to give a brief presentation to address what could not be covered in tonight's comments. Thank you for your time.
My name is Claire, I'm 2410 Timber Oak Drive. Mayor Kineman and council members of Oak Ridge. I'm an organizer and community advocate for property rights and the Pipeline Center. Thank you for considering the many concerns raised tonight about the southeast supply expansion project. I'm here to talk a little bit more about some of the economic and safety burdens this project could bring to the Oak Ridge community. This project is part of a larger proposed methane buildout in the southeast. Now, much of the gas from the proposed pipelines in North Carolina would fuel data centers for artificial intelligence in other parts of the state and other states. Landowners here would be forced to pay taxes on unusable property and shoulder unfair health and safety risks, while tech and utility giants elsewhere would profit from the gas being pumped through Oak Ridge. Transco claims that the pipeline will be safe. We've heard about their safety record, we've heard that they're worse than other gas transmission operators. Now, people could say, I've lived to, next to a pipeline for 30, 40 years, and I haven't had an issue yet, so I don't know why it's a problem. Well, that's a very understandable statement. Unfortunately, the safety problem lies within it. Gas pipelines are, as we've heard, are under high pressure and do have the potential to rupture and explode. More importantly, though, the pipelines that are currently along the proposed right-of-way are old. Some, like in Oak Ridge, are upwards of 60 years old. At that age, the risk for issues climbs due to things like corrosion, or the land itself moving and shifting. The company hasn't addressed this issue, so that communities have a full picture of the safety risks they would bear should the pipeline be built. This pipeline co-location could impact how widespread damage would be in the event of a failure. We've heard about the blast zone, or the potential impact radius. Watchdog Organization Pipeline Safety Trust has raised concerns about how the blast zone is calculated because of instances of death within it, which demonstrates that the calculation is not conservative enough. I want to highlight some of the identified high consequence risk areas, which are your beloved schools and beloved schools and churches that are within the blast zone. Oak Ridge Weekday School and Methodist Church, Oak Ridge Elementary School, Oak Ridge Military Academy, Oak Ridge First Baptist Church, and St. James AME Church. Finally, we've heard a little bit about how ratepayers will bear the burden of construction costs. I want to emphasize that a little bit. The company has stated that it will pass along the pipeline construction costs to utility customers through incremental rate increases over a matter of years. Transco calculates this project to cost more than $1.5 billion. In three or four years, how much is that going to inflate? I urge you, please, listen to your constituents and their concerns, and let us share more information that couldn't be covered tonight in a brief presentation. After considering all the concerns brought to you, we hope that you'll take a stand and pass a resolution against this project. Thank you for your time.
Am I able to hand you stuff now? Yeah?
You can leave it to the clerk.
I'm John Browning. I live at 8024 Linville Road. We do have the pleasure of paying taxes on some property that the pipeline runs through, and I wanted to just tell you, I agree with everything that's been said, and I'm totally against the expansion of the pipeline. Growing up in Oak Ridge, Oak Ridge has a history of the citizens stepping up and doing the right thing, from Frank Whitaker and his group for planting trees and making the community a better place, to Sandra Smith's dad, Tom Brown, organizing a group to stop the expansion of the landfill. Again, those were all the things that were harmful to Oak Ridge, and I agree that this gas pipeline will be detrimental to Oak Ridge. When you look in terms of risk-reward, the risks have been commited on and without very little reward or benefit to the town of Oak Ridge. And again, with global warming, I know it didn't happen overnight, but these small things about decreasing our use of gas and increasing renewable wind and solar, I think, is a step in the right direction to make Oak Ridge and every place else a better place to live. Thank you.
Ben Walraven, 5931 Pepper Road. I'd just like to make a few comments about the fees and policy document that you guys are going to talk about tonight for the community center. I implore you not to make them too restrictive so that it prevents people from wanting to use the facility. I'd also ask you to consider the senior citizens in your deliberation. We've already allocated $30,000 a year to the youth for use of the park. We built $2 million of new fields, generally mostly for the youth, and I don't see anything in there for seniors. So please think about that as you make your decisions about the rules of the community center. And also, in this, you probably will have to think, if you're going to build pickleball courts, what you're going to charge to have those be used? And finally, just a little tidbit, I was looking up on the internet the other day, 65-year-old age group and plus vote at a rate of 71%. Thank you.
Carolyn Rock, 1976 Beeson Road. I've already spoken with several of you about my feelings on the proposed senior fees for the community farmhouse. And as a member of the Parks and Rec Board, I think you all know that I'm very much in support of what we have already voted on unanimously twice with our board. I would like to ask you, as others have, to consider our seniors as important as our youth in this community. We give over $30,000 a year of free use to our youth, and I'm in full support of youth athletics in our park. But if you want to consider another important age group, you should consider the seniors equally as important as our youth. And if you consider the amount of money that our parks and recreation have cost, the athletics have cost us by far more than this community farmhouse is costing us. So this is a small give, in all relativity, for the town to give back to our senior community that is so important and that has paid taxes for many more years than most people. So not only use reason, but use your hearts when making your decision tonight.
Anyone else?
Claudia Whitaker, 2338 Oak Ridge Road. I would like to thank our Parks and Rec Committee for their hard work and voice my support for their policy allowing resident seniors two free hours when using the Farmhouse Community Center. I would consider it a gesture of love and respect. Another matter that I would like to address is the fees for using our park playing fields. In an online search, I found that most towns charge a resident fee per sport played, and that the non-resident fee is often double that fee. Some of the non-resident fees were as high as $80 per sport. We have just invested $2.5 million for two new playing fields to add to the fields that we already have. As you may know, these fields are costly to maintain. As a taxpayer, I am happy to support this construction and maintenance, even though I do not personally benefit. However, I feel that it is unfair for the town residents to bear the vast majority of these costs. About half of the youth who play on our beautiful fields are not town residents and do not pay taxes here, and I believe they should bear a larger part of the costs. I urge the Parks and Rec Committee to pursue a fair solution and to change this policy. Thank you for your consideration.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Barbara Engel, 8524 Rosedale Drive. I won't go over what others have said about the fees for seniors, but I would also like you to consider that a lot of the volunteers on all the committees are seniors because we have the time, and it would be nice for us also to have the ability to use the farmhouse. I have several opportunities that I can think of that I would like to use that farmhouse for two hours every once in a great while. So I would appreciate it if you would really think about that. I'm a volunteer, and you know I volunteer here. There are a lot of other seniors that volunteer here. So if you lose us, you lose a lot of volunteerism. Thank you.
Frank Whitaker, 2338 Oak Ridge Road. Those of us who have been involved in planting trees here in Oak Ridge appreciate the recognition. As a point of interest, I've run the, kind of run the figures on what all this cost. And if you look at Oak Ridge, all the 300 oaks that we planted, the thousands of pines, everything you see on the town park, 200 pines behind my house, we bought those will-oak trees for $0.50 apiece, and we planted them behind my house and transplanted them, they got to be about six feet tall. The pines were provided by the Forester Service. We rented a back, an auger to dig the holes, so the entire town of Oak Ridge was reforested for a total cost of around $300. So I thought that might be of interest to you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, we'll close the first public comment session, move on to consideration approval of facility fee schedule and farmhouse community center. I don't believe anyone spoke about actually doing away with something for the seniors. It's just how we wanted to implement it. So we did ask for it to go back. I think we'd like to have Adrian maybe give a preamble or a pre-briefing on it, and then we can go to council for questions and discussion.
Adrian Eckerenrod, 5679 Timmertrace Way, co-chair of Parks and Rec Board. So we received the recommendations, we spoke with some council members, and we went through kind of a line-by-line with what some of the items to see that we kind of wanted some more clarity upon. As the copy that you received, we went through with the highlighted version that you have, which goes through kind of those revisions, some of the kind of key takeaways there that you'll see, is the clarification for the $1 million insurance policy is only for events that are serving alcohol, so not just if there's a caterer, but if there's alcohol being served, that's the only time we're expecting to see them to have a liability, which any individual's already going to have gone through those steps if they are, you know, a facility that's serving alcohol. The other part is the, we did clarify, a lot of it was just kind of giving more clarity to some of the points in there, particularly on areas such as the weather was kind of changed more towards liability, and we gave more clearance towards how the overflow parking works, where that needs approval from Brock, and it's mostly in regards to how it might pertain to the weather. Obviously, we don't want vehicles parking if the ground is soft, and it's going to damage that. So there's more clarity in the policy as we've written for that. There was a fair amount of discussion, of course, on the fees. We provided a matrix. Okay. We provided a matrix where we looked at other facilities such as Kernersville AI Church and the Summerfield Community Center, looking at their fees and rates as well. And we kind of felt that we've landed kind of in the middle of that as well with what the rates we were looking at. And then in regards to, I think, probably the more hot-button-topic item of the seniors' side of it, we had some discussion upon that. We kind of left that unchanged as the group vote was to continue to have the seniors go through there, you know, with having the two-hour availability for the facility. A lot of the discussion that we had was, this is kind of, needs to be a living document because we don't know where it was, and that's just kind of where we left it at, was we weren't sure of the usage. I'll give a couple of clarity points, some questions that have already been brought up to me. One point is, we did speak about there needing to be a break in between that. I do not believe we have that in the policy, as I was reading it through, though, because the way it currently states is someone could have two hours, two hours, two hours. And so there should be a little bit of, probably a break in between there. One of the things that we did discuss as the board was the free senior rental. We were looking for that to be as little impact as possible on the resources of town staff because right now Brock and his team are going to have to be responsible for the cleanup. And so we were expecting that the seniors would most likely leave it in a probably better state than they found it situation. But nonetheless, we still wanted to be mindful of the team being able to transition, which is part of where we limited the hours as well. So we're trying to keep the hours for the free rental during periods when town staff would already be there to facilitate the services.
Okay. I'm sure we'll have some questions for you.
Tell me.
I know there's a range of ideas about, of this, so I'd like to open it up for discussion. Mr. Gresen?
I have no comment at this point.
Mr. Stone?
Let me think for a bit. Sorry. Come back to you. Yeah, come back to him.
Mr. Harton? You have, I think, yeah, good.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Adrian. Regarding the fees, I, first of all, if you take a look, I think you can probably determine who is the most senior of the councilmen. I may not be the oldest person in the council chambers tonight, but I am the oldest on the dais.
Could you pull your microphone a little closer?
I am the oldest on the dais. So I have nothing against the concept of providing usage to seniors somewhat the way it's been proposed. I think if you go back a year, and it's been a year since some of us have been on council, when I introduced myself a year ago, I said I was, I like to make data-driven decisions. And I think Parks and Rec have gathered information and made comparisons on things, as you mentioned, rates of different towns or different community centers around, and I commend you for that, and I think you've made good comparisons. It becomes more difficult when you're looking at usage rates because we haven't, we haven't been here before.
Right.
So I'm still someone that would rather make decisions based on data as opposed to opinions, and I'm not saying the opinions are bad or malicious or whatever, but they're still opinions. Opinions generally are related to personal interest, no matter how you cut them. So I would like to propose an alternative, which is instead of establishing the fees on a permanent basis now, to establish them as an introductory period, which gives us the opportunity to acquire practical experience with the farmhouse community center while gaining needed rental usage data. And I would propose that, I think this would help us to better understand the overall service offering and value of the community center as a future rental facility for the town. I would suggest that it would be a minimum, the introductory period would be a minimum of six months. It probably would be better set to be 12 months, but I would say six months with the ability to increase that time by three-month periods by Parks and Rec. But again, the intent would be to develop and see what the usage is actually going to be and not our opinions of it. So I'm reluctant to, I'm reluctant tonight to say, let's, let's vote for a full approach. And I would rather see an introductory period as described, six months to two years, in the hands of you. I would expect a minimum of a report at the end of a full year of use, but you could come earlier to tell us some of the findings that you, that you see. I have no problem with the proposed 40, 40 hours for non-residents with a two minimum on non-residents at 20 hours. I didn't have a problem with that. Relative to Oak Ridge senior residents, again, a group that I'm a member of, I have no, no problem with the no cost for two hours. Again, in what I propose, I would hold that to Monday through Wednesday from 8 until 2, based on availability, additional hours may be booked at the residence fee level. So I haven't changed too much of what you've suggested. I'm just suggesting, rather than determine it today, introduce, make an introductory period, and be prepared in a year based on data to recommend a future, a future schedule of fees for this program. That's it.
Ms. Snyder?
Thank you. Well, let's see. I'll start with, as I said last month, I'm in favor also of the proposed discounted rates of up to two hours per week to our seniors. I think it's good for the town, it's good for seniors, a group that's been particularly excited about having a community space like this to use. So this policy, together with the reasonable rates that have been proposed that I do think are appropriate, like Mr. Harton, I think this should support, should hopefully, support strong community usage of the farmhouse. Of course, we don't know that's going to happen, but it's important in what we do to set a goal. I think the goal has to be to get people into the farmhouse and put it to work as a community center for Oak Ridge. So that's, that's the goal. We didn't build this to sit empty. So I know, just because we're five different people, we'd make a great Parks and Rec Board because we all have different opinions, and that's something I saw on the Parks and Rec Board as they entered the first of the two very long discussions about this. So we have different ideas, and that's natural, about, you know, whether it should be Monday through Thursday, Monday through Wednesday, what through Thursday, Monday through Wednesday, what exactly we should say in the, in the policy. So frankly, probably each of us would write it or rewrite it in a slightly different But rather than redoing all of the time that Parks and Rec spent trying to come to consensus, I want to recognize that any policy is simply a starting point. With that in mind, I'm willing to take Parks and Rec's fee proposal as a reasonable starting point and go from there. I like Councilman Harton's idea of signaling that we're gathering usage data, since that will be key to updating our rates and policies as needed. So I do think we should ask Parks and Rec to report back to us on usage trends, probably in six months and again in 12 months, so that we get a full range of seasonal usage data. So this kind of reporting is similar to what we asked of Parks and Rec when we set up, when we first approved tentatively alcohol use at Music in the Park. It's a little different, but again, it's a reporting back to see how we go forward. And I think the best way to signal this gathering of usage data is with the simplest statement possible within the policy, something that I think applies to all of our fees, which is rental rates are subject to change based on usage data. In fact, I think we should include that statement on our facility fee schedule and on our website. Thank you.
In my software job, I'm called upon to do a lot of analysis of processes, and when I take a look at a process, many times we use analogy of a tree, and everybody's heard it, is, you know, there's two ways around a tree. And the question always is, is your way tremendously longer around the tree than the way I'm going to go around the tree? And if the time it takes to go around the tree, left or right, is about the same amount of time, I don't really get too hung up on which way we're going on it. That's why I don't have, I would be fine with Mr. Harton's approach, or I would be fine with what's already in the, in the policy. I like Mr. Harton's approach because it really isolates the senior program so that it's, the focus is on the senior program. But I do believe that if you really dig, dig deep into both the existing policy that's being recommended and what Mr. Harton's recommending, I definitely put it in the category of one of, you're going around the same tree in about the same amount of time. So I don't have a real, you know, I definitely can support. I do share a little bit of concern about that it's 8 to 5, you know, a little bit there, you know, so I would, I'd be open to maybe, maybe adjusting the hours a little bit there. But again, and I think I've tried to communicate this to Mr. Harton, I don't have a real problem with either one. I do like his approach of isolating it, though. So if we went with, if I had a preference, I'd lean toward Mr. Harton's approach to isolate it out a little bit and say, look, this is what, this is what the senior program is. I am over 65 also, I'm 69 years old, so I understand. We haven't had a lot of ability, we haven't had a lot of options right now to offer programs for seniors and things like that. So I definitely would love to also continue talking about that at some point I wouldn't mind us start looking at some organized programs for seniors, so that maybe there would be a volunteer. I think Carolyn Ruck gave me a call, and the example I gave is that somebody might voluntarily run a yoga program regularly every Wednesday, you know, so that, that kind of stuff I definitely would like to explore so that we start having maybe some, so there's some expectation that on Wednesday, this is, this regularly happens. Another example would be like a quilting, if someone wanted to have a quilting club, that maybe every Tuesday you can guarantee that if you wanted to learn about quilting, you go, you show up there. Mr. Harton also talked about the fact that as seniors, we tend to get up a little earlier than the rest of you. So one of the things you might consider is whether or not it should be earlier than 8:00 AM, you know, they should be there, because we are going to have electronic clocks. So it's not like staff has to be there, and I do take your, your comment about the fact that it's a reasonable expectation that the seniors will leave it probably in as good or better shape than they got it. So I'm not too worried that they're, that they're going to have a raucous party at 7:00 in the morning, and there'll be all sorts of debris laying around, you know, and, and broken chairs and things like that. I don't expect that. So I don't have a lot of concerns in that area. I do have a little concern about how late in the day it goes, because I think that gets into the period where maybe the elementary school might want to come down and use it, because it is a first come, first served thing, so the seniors can say, hey, I'm going to book it at 2:00, and that kind of may get in the way of like elementary school people, teachers that may want to come down and run, run, run a little program or something like that. That's why I have a little bit of concern that it's running all the way to 5:00. But like I said, I, I put both of these in the category of we're going around the same tree, I think we're getting in the same place on the other side of the tree. I lean toward supporting Mr. Harton's approach, but I can live with either one. So, Mr. Stone?
Sure. Let me start with the general statement. Last month when we discussed this, we had a robust discussion, and there was an accusation how poorly the process played out last month. I knew it, I knew it, I knew it. As soon as we gave the information to the Parks and Rec Committee, Adrian and his people took that ball, they ran with it, and we have something so much better, because those people, your people, you and your team, you care. You understood what some of the concerns are, and here we are. So I knew it was going to work out that way. Good job. So on that, I'm going to, I'm just going to step off of where I was going to land, and I'm going to listen to what I'm hearing from the, from the council. I do agree that we probably need to cut this thing off at about 2:00, and the reason why is because when the school gets out, or in the summertime, the afternoons, we may see some after-school programs, we may see some, some parent activities and things like that, and if this thing runs till 5:00, then it takes away from people that, that may want to use, and to Ann's point, we want a lot of people going through there. You know, we want a lot of use on this thing. We want everybody to get in there so they can see what this facility is and how it works. So I think right now, the only thing that I need clarity on is that the statement says, senior citizens 65 and over who are residents of Oak Ridge may rent farms at no cost for two hours, Monday through Thursday, 8 to 5, based on availability. And Adrian and I had this conversation, so I'm not hitting him cold on it, but if the five of us decided to stack up one behind the other, two hours, two hours, two hours, two hours, two hours, there is no availability. So I, I heard what you said is that I think the intent was to put a gap in between there. That's one of those tweaks, okay? It's not a deal breaker, but it's one of those tweaks where we want to make sure that it's not locked in by a small group. We may find that there are 10 seniors groups, a metal detecting group, and a quilting group, and a chess group, and what, but if one group is locking this thing up, then the other groups are excluded. So I'd like to see how we're going to manage that, but that goes to Mr. Harton's point, is that if we get data, then we can make some better decisions in six months. I like the six-month introductory. I agree, I think, that to start with, because we can make adjustments at any time, I would like to see us start with the Monday through Wednesday, 8 to 2, I believe that's what you said, Jim, Monday through Wednesday, 8 to 2. I think that's a great place to start from, and we might find out in, in three months that Parks and Rec comes back and go, this thing is wildly popular, we need to do something else, or they may come back and say, we need to do something else because this ain't working. It doesn't mean we have to wait six months, but as we gather information, I like the idea of giving Parks and Rec that ability to do some tweaks where they see it, but also let's go ahead and move forward on this. So I would, I would support Jim's suggestions.
Can I comment on the, it isn't in the policy, because I think it's an in-house thing, but what I understood from Ashley, and I don't know if you've had this conversation with her, is that she needs to set up MyRec so that when someone books, say, say I book it just for anything I want, from 8 to 12, that there needs to be at least an hour gap. And if it's a big event, say I rent it from, I don't know, even longer on the weekend or something, and there's something else coming in in the evening, it may need to be a longer gap, but that way there's time for the Parks and Rec guys to come in, sweep it clean, and there are also going to be times during the week when a professional cleaning service will have to come in. So there will be gaps that can be put in by staff or automatically by MyRec, so that there couldn't be this kind of stacking that you're talking about.
That's a great point, but I think what you're talking about there is for rental, unless, and I haven't seen it in here, but unless we're going to ask the seniors to schedule through MyRec.
Yeah, everybody schedules through MyRec.
They are, that's in the policy.
Yeah.
Forgive me for my lack of reading skills on that.
The other thing I wanted to ask is, Mr. Harton, my understanding in reading your email was that the, you kept saying, Mr. Keniman, that it was isolated. The, the language in here is about reassessing all of the fees and rates, or all of the rates, and I think that's appropriate. I don't think, was your intention to isolate only an analysis of the senior?
Well, I think, I think under the circumstances, everything could be evaluated as an introductory approach, but I, I didn't change the overall approach, but I was more interested in getting used data, which I think all of us would rather make decisions from. Now to make a comment on some of my thinking and on the timeframes, and I forget who, maybe Mayor Keniman said it, again, I'm, I'm a senior guy. By 8:00, in my mind, a great part of my day is already gone by, by 8:00.
That means it's time for bed.
Well, I'm, I'm up early usually, and I think a lot of senior men might also join me in that statement. So I also was willing to look at, since it's a keyed entry, could there be some, some entry before 8:00? I couldn't understand the 8:00, but I lived with that as far as the document was concerned. The other thing I thought about is that whoever is coming in, but if they are seniors, they might approach the early morning from the standpoint of a breakfast kind of meeting or something like that, or midday, a lunch kind of meeting, and what I attempted to do with the 2:00 was to give time for that and also time that's split till somebody coming, may also be coming in in the afternoon. The reality is that there's no right answer to any of this, but what, and I apologize, because I don't know if you remember, but, you know, I, my wife and I had been out of the country for several weeks before the last meeting, so I wasn't fully up to speed on everything. But as I thought through it in the past week, I just felt that why nail things down now? Establish it introductory. I would think Parks and Rec members would also like to better understand the data of the community center usage. I know that's what I would be looking for, and I think by putting an introductory period in for six months, nine months, a year, maybe longer depending on what Parks and Rec, I think we'll get a better product for the long-term future. Now, somebody said to me this week, we've never done this before. Well, the reality is we've never opened a community center before, and I think this approach may be a better practice than just basing things on our individual opinions. So I'll stop there.
Okay, well, then I guess, hearing you explain what you're doing a little bit more, I get, you know, to Ms. Snyder's point that, when I say, so I mean, it, it sounds like you're, you're okay with, with the policy with the, the adjustment of Monday through Wednesday, 8 to 2, adding a formal request for feedback at the six-month period. Is that, would that be what you're asking for?
But again, I would propose an introductory period.
Okay.
To establish that, not, not retrospective thing. Upfront, an introductory period.
Okay, so, so I mean, I'm saying is, if we can, if we figure out the exact wording about how to do that, it sounds like we want to, we want to establish this as, if, Mr. Harton, if I understand, you're saying establishes as an introductory period, make the one minor adjustment of making it Monday through Wednesday, 8 to 2.
Correct.
And I, and you're basically saying you're okay with the rest of the policy?
With the approach of, of the introductory and steps, six month, nine month, 12, 12 month for reporting. And if, you know, if you see those, I think it'll take you at least six months to get reasonable, there may be something you see there very quickly to come back to council, but I, I think the evaluation should be done by Parks and Rec, and if we, we have a complete, have a complete reporting at the end of the year, if that's January, February 26, I'm not sure what that date would be, but Parks and Rec may request an extra year, and I think with that, they would, they would, they would need to have the agreement of town council.
So at the end of that period, though.
Yep.
Would the step be at that point that you would end the introductory period and make this a formal policy?
Unless Parks, if Parks and Recs feel that they have the information to make a clear thing, yes. If not, and they request more time, I think they could request that, and we can approve an extra time period of six, nine, 10.
I just want to understand that, that this, we, we approve this as an introductory period with those adjustments, and at the end of the introductory period, we'd have to take the extra step of formalizing it. I see our, our town attorney's got a little head shake going on there. Did you want to comment?
Oh, go ahead. I'll let you.
Sorry. These council adopts are always subject to review and revision. Normally, you don't call something introductory. If you want it to only last for a limited time, you're going to sunset the thing after a certain time. I hear what, for instance, Councilman Harton is saying, but it seems to me in the adopting motion or resolution, you would say, we're hereby adopting this resolution, and Part B is no later than six months, this will come back before council, based on Parks and Rec's information review and staff, to see what the usage has been, and compare that to the terms of the adopt, initially adopted policy, and then make any revisions you think you need to make or not. Mayor, I also wanted to comment on the statutory authorization, because there was some question about having a different rate for seniors. I want to, I've assured some members of council already and staff, there is, in my opinion, the authorization specifically for this is 168-497, which is standalone authorization by the legislature for what are called senior citizen programs. I won't read the paragraph length statute to you, but, and Councilman Gresen asked me about what program means, for instance, but a program is anything you say it is. This doesn't define programs. So if you say, we hereby create a different rate schedule for seniors in this instance, that's a program. It's not a glorified program where you're trying to be comprehensive and saying, we're going to do A, B, C, D for seniors, but it's authorized, in my opinion, by this statute, the same way our recreational program is authorized, generally speaking, by the statutes on recreation and Parks and Recreation, and our relationship, for instance, with ORYA is a public, private partnership in effect to provide recreation programs that significantly benefit the youth, because that's what recreation programs do in this state. But the authorizations there, two points I'd make, the statute defines seniors as 60 and older. and older. So I would be happier if the ultimately adopted policy here was 60, because you could tie it directly to an authorizing statute. The second point is, you've had either two or three now good discussions of this proposal, and even tonight, you're making some revisions off the cuff. It seems to me, even though, I know you don't want to brook further delay, yet, it seems to me that turning this back to staff to take all the comments made today, the consensus views that are coming off the desk tonight, and then circulate a further revision back to council and Parks and Rec to adopt in January might be better than trying to do something on the fly here. I also, I said to you, there's one other point I want to make, and Sam can join me in on this. This statute I'm referring to talks in terms of being able to appropriate revenues for seniors. A discount, as contemplated here, is effectively a negative appropriation. It's saying, we're going to have a fee schedule, but for this class of benefited persons that we're allowed to benefit, we're remitting the fee. It's there, but in this case, we're remitting it. And as an accounting matter, and as a matter of municipal appropriation, I'd rather that language be in there, that those fees are, yeah, it's rent-free, but I'd rather say the fees for those periods are omitted. And the very last point I would make, it occurred to me while you were talking, was about the language allowing for rental by seniors, but it doesn't say they all have to be seniors. Now, I don't think you're going to have the situation where some teenagers get their grandmother to rent the community center, and then it's a bunch of teenagers showing up for the usage. The intent clearly is that senior citizens are the ones that show up and use it. We don't say that in here. So I don't know, but that council might want language in there, laying the ground rule, so to speak, as to, within that rental, by a senior or for seniors or for senior group, that it's only going to be for seniors to use, or predominantly seniors, or something like that, if you gather what I'm saying.
I understand what you're saying.
Those are my points, Mayor.
Yeah. So, so to clarify, I mean, whatever we adopt, we're adopting a policy. We're free to review it at any time we like and undo it, or redo it, or modify it. So I believe it's built in, I would, I would say to Mr. Harton, it's built in that we have the ability to review this, and we can set, say, look, we want you to report back in six months as part of what we're asking for here. We could even make that a separate resolution, separate action, to say, look, we approved the policy, and then we also ask you, we ask you to come back in six months and report.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so that's, I think, what I hope would meet your requirements, Mr. Harton.
My key issue is to establish that, since we don't have data, a mechanism for gathering data. And putting that back into the hands of Park and Rec, I thought, in my 3:00 AM wisdom, that indicating that it's an introductory offer or introductory period seemed to be the best approach, because I wanted to signal to people that it wasn't a permanent thing. It was something to establish the ability to gather data, and that data could be six months, nine months, a year. I did indicate that at the end of 12 months, there should be a reporting timeframe. Could be earlier, but certainly at the end of 12 months, based on that data. And then if Parks and Rec feels that they still need more time, then we can request at that point. But my interest is generating data and not establishing the long-term policy without data underneath our feet. So.
But again, as I said, if you adopt the policy, it's always subject to that data coming in, being considered on the schedule that council creates, which could be next, the first month, six months, 12 months.
However, however that verbiage can.
And in terms of introductory offers, I think that's the kind of PR that the town might do in saying, this is now an available facility, and, you know, seniors know that you have the opportunity to have, have the unit without cost. And note, too, that even though it's in this policy, this affects rates charged by the town, and that, basically, you're folding that into the overall rate schedule of the town. You know what I'm saying? So this policy is to control use of, regulate use of the community farmhouse, but it becomes part of the overall rate scheme for all facilities for the town. So that's what you're looking at when you review a usage data.
Well, I like Mr. Harton's, eight to two is fine, Monday through Wednesday. I think we should send it back to Parks and Rec and let our staff and do the recommendations of Mr. Thomas and vote on it in January, on our recommendation.
Would it be possible for us to approve it with the changes discussed and not have it come back to this body so that we could be posting it to the website by January?
I would, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Thomas.
Yeah, I would, I would prefer that it come back to us, quite honestly, so that we can get that last look at it. Look.
But it could come back to us by email.
Okay. The, the reality of it is, the farmhouse isn't going to open in January. So waiting 30 days isn't going to be detrimental, bless you, is not going to be detrimental to the process. As part of the process, I personally would like to see the finished product before we vote on it.
I'm very often, you know, much to Ms. Snyder's contrination sometimes, that I'm a big one for saying, let's, let's take our time, push it back. I think we're at the point where we're making a relatively minor adjustment to the policy. We're basically saying that we're going to change, change the time from Monday to Wednesday, eight to two. We can make the 60-year-old adjustment there. And that we also, and if I understand the way it was explained, we would make a separate action to direct Parks and Rec to come back to us in six months. We would not build that into the policy. The policy would not do that, unless we were expecting them to always come back every six months. But we're asking for them to come back in six months and report on, how is this policy working? Okay? But separately, we're being asked to approve the policy. And I'm, I'm, I'm okay with voting on it tonight with these two changes, basically the, my, yes, Adrian, go ahead.
I didn't know if I was able to make a comment on behalf of the Parks and Rec Board. So in the spirit of what I know the board was trying to accomplish, if the recommendation that I know the board would back me with, if the consideration changes, instead of Monday through Friday, it's Monday through Wednesday, so if we shorten the days, instead of the eight to two, if you would consider eight to four, and the reason being is with that one-hour gap that Park, that the MyRec is going to instill in there, if you do it from an eight to one, I'm sorry, eight to two, you would lock it into only two hours, being able, you could do two two-hour events in that time period, the way it's going to span, from eight to nine, nine to 10, with a one-hour gap, and then 11 to 12, 12 to one, then you have one-hour gaps, and then you don't give anybody another space for another two-hour block. If you did eight to four, Monday through Wednesday, you essentially would allow three rental possibilities. So it's just something to consider.
Well, to, to that point, though, again, I go back to elementary schools getting out round three, and I want to have it available for rental with that population, to get a different population in there. And again, we're talking about something that we're going to do a check and adjust as we go along. I understand your point, but this kind of goes to the point that the mayor was making, is that another tweak that needs to be in here is it needs to be called out, that there's going to be a time gap between the rentals.
That only needs to be on MyRec, I think.
MyRec does control that.
In other words, and some seniors will rent it for three hours or four hours and pay for two hours. I mean, I don't, I don't think we need to explain the inner workings of MyRec and our cleaning schedule in this document, because it's too complicated.
I just don't think we should vote on it tonight. I'm listening to our attorney, Mr. Thomas, and he's made a recommendation that we put it off for a month. So if we, if we're not going to listen to him, why do we have him? I mean, as simple as that. He's an attorney.
Right.
Smart guy.
I would add to the two items that were just mentioned as being part of a potential motion, language sort of addressing Mr. Harton's concerns, saying rental rates, which is obvious, we don't need to state it, but to say rental rates are subject to change based on usage data, or just rental rates are subject to change. I, I know our attorney often offers a cautious approach, but we've discussed this twice, Parks and Rec has discussed this twice. I don't want to discuss this a third time. I know, I want people, this policy to be up so that people can start booking it as soon as we announce that rentals are going to be available, possibly February 1st. And booking things a month in advance is not a long time. But we also want to be building up interest and excitement, you know, it's part of the promotional approach to this project. So the sooner we get this decided, and I think these, what I'm now saying are three changes, adding one to your two, I think that's simple enough that this council could, with great appreciation to our attorney, move forward.
Well, I've sat here and, a month ago, without full understanding, and now I'm totally confused by MyRec, so apologies for that. But I'm in the camp of allowing staff and Parks and Rec to take all these recommendations and bring them forward in January and vote then. So I agree with Mr. Greason.
Then I think there's at least three people that want to do it that way, so.
Like I say, I don't want this to turn into another Heritage Farm Park where we open it premature.
No, that's, you know, it's fine. Like I said, it's, we're at the point where there's a majority of council would like to send it back to Parks and Rec with the, that we're basically, it sounds like consensus is that, you know, take another hard look at the hours. You've pointed out a good point, that, you know, if we do eight to two, we don't get evenly two-hour things, maybe there's, maybe, maybe you don't, maybe we don't need an hour in between. Because again, what our expectation is, is that, that the facility will possibly be left in a condition that doesn't need an hour. You know, maybe there's some other ideas that you can think about how to optimize those hours and stuff like that. So, you know, so with that, I think I've heard that there's at least three people that want to return this back to Parks and Rec. Do we need any kind of formal action? All right, then is there a motion to act on this?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that, based on feedback from council and our attorney, that we return the facility fee schedule and farmhouse community center policy to Parks and Rec and staff to work on the commentary from council.
Is there a second?
Second.
And discussion? I know it's frustrating. We will get there. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you.
Mayor, again, the, Councilwoman Schneider was saying that there hasn't been that many things discussed tonight. It's, it's in hand in terms of what's been discussed. And we can, I think, turn around the revision required pretty quickly. At staff level, we'll get it back to Parks and Rec. Circulate it to council if you want it, or if you want it first to go to Parks and Rec, that would be your instruction. But I think we can do that very quickly.
Okay, I would be in favor of getting it circulated as soon as possible, understanding that Parks and Rec may come back with something else after, after that, too.
Send the revision to council and to the Parks and Rec Board.
Yes, I would prefer to go to Parks and Rec.
All right, we'll do it.
They've done great work. We ought to allow them the opportunity.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Does anyone need a break or anything?
Let's go.
Okay. All right. Town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and counsel. Several committee appointments and reappointments on your agenda. The first is following up on the establishment of the Planning and Zoning Board members to act as the Board of Adjustment. There is a request to appoint regular members, or as regular members of the BOA, Jason Streck, Nancy Stottemeyer, Ron Simpson, Patty Pazlaru, and Clay Flint as the ETJ representative. And then alternates to the Board of Adjustment would be made up of Patrick Fiorentino, Craig Rosenfeld, and Tara Tillman.
All right. Any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the appointment?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve the appointment of the BOA members and the alternates.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nice, have it.
Secondly, is a request to appoint Paul Carney as a regular member of the HPC.
Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Paul Carney?
Subout.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And thirdly, reappointments of Nancy Stottemeyer to the Planning and Zoning Board and Tree City Committee, Roy Nidorf to the Tree City Committee, and Chelsea Young as an alternate to the Parks and Recreation.
Is there a motion to approve the reappointments?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The next item is approval of the 2025 town meeting schedule. Couple of notes. First Thursday, of course, is the typical council meeting, but due to holidays, the New Year's holiday, and also the Fourth of July week, we've proposed the second Thursday for both of those meeting dates. You'll also note that the Board of Adjustment schedule has now been synced with the Planning and Zoning Board schedule. We've done this simply for the benefit of our members. One of the challenges with the Board of Adjustment, obviously, is to keep it staffed. Having the meetings on the same night, while acknowledging is not ideal, is a convenience we're extending to those board members, and I know that they appreciate that consideration. And we're hopeful that they're able to manage their different hats, should that need arise.
Is there a motion to approve the 2025 meeting schedule?
Subout.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Next, it's that time of year to adopt the Town of Oak Ridge 2025 observed holiday schedule. Again, this is the same schedule that we adopt every year, and it follows the state of North Carolina holiday schedule.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the 2025 holiday schedule?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next.
Next, we have consideration of Resolution 2024-14, policy prohibiting the viewing of pornography on town networks and devices. Earlier this year, the General Assembly adopted General Statute 143-805, explicitly stating that public agencies shall not permit the viewing of pornography by its employees, elected officials, and public appointees on a network of that public agency or on devices owned, leased, maintained, or otherwise controlled by the public agency. We have a resolution attached based on guidance provided by the UNC School of Government, also reviewed and approved by Mr. Thomas, that ensures town compliance with the new statute. I'll also note that the state requires annual reporting of any unauthorized viewing or attempted viewing of pornography on the town network or on town devices in a format required by the state, which has yet to be provided, and we're working with our IT consultant to ensure full compliance. I also want to note that the town's personnel policy has always prohibited this activity as a conduct on becoming a public officer or employee, and we've never had any reason to use the disciplinary.
to use the disciplinary remedies that are available in the personnel policy for that.
Any questions? This, we have no liability or concern about our Wi-Fi. We don't, we don't control.
This is strictly, strictly applies to the town network or town devices.
So in the park, not our problem.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to approve the Resolution 2024-14?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any other business?
That's all this evening, thank you.
Excellent. Sam, would you like to take the stage?
I know after a 61-page audit report and a 19-page governance report for a total of 80 pages, we may have set a new record. Anybody that's got sleep issues may, may want to borrow a copy. For the month, for the finance report, everyone got a copy of the financials. They were sent out yesterday evening. Overall, town's holding a strong balance sheet position, 3.2 million. Fund balance of that is 3.14 rounded, 3.139 million. So liabilities of $70,000. Overall, a fairly normal month. We've had revenues that came in of 68,398.82. This is usually a little bit of a slower month. We had property taxes, sales taxes, which are normal, a little bit of solid waste tax, and then it's cold, so some of the park rentals and all are down. We did have donations to the Veterans Honor Green. We're expecting a large collection of tax because the, the period where you're supposed to pay runs out, I believe it's January the 5th. So we'll probably have an uptick in collections in the month of December, very close to the end, and then again, January. But overall, a fairly normal month on revenue side. On expenses, everything was still a fairly normal month for this time of year. We had total expenses of 198,318.5 and a reduction of fund balance of 129.9. And Schedule 1 has got the balances. We're still monitoring all our accounts with Truist, Bank of North Carolin, excuse me, Bank of Oak Ridge and Piedmont, and monitoring for interest rates. As was reported in the audit, we, we had a really good year last year with interest rates, but rates are softening and we don't have as much money since we have expended it on the park. The one thing I do, sad to say, our liaison with Truist that we have had for many years now, Dave LeBlanc, has left Truist and pursuing another job. So we do have the new replacement. He is scheduled to come by my office tomorrow. He wanted to meet myself and my staff with the banking and have a talk. I will report back on that. The good news is, he appears to be a Northwest alum, so he's from our area. So somewhere in the later 90s classes, which is slightly after when I was at Northwest.
Kid.
Yeah, just a kid, yeah. But we're all looking forward to meeting him. He's reached out to us, and we certainly want to wish Dave well in any endeavors that he's in. He, he did really good work for us, especially with the loan on Heritage Farm Park. He was very, very crucial on that. But you've got that schedule, detailed schedules follow with all the detail of income and expenses all the way back to our asset listings, the debt load, and then the water fund. So I'll go down the list. ACH wire transfer remission is 24,702 for the month of, and that should say November, not October. That's a typo from a tired CPA. Motor vehicles tax was 96,1402. 24,702 was the property tax for a total of 34,31602. All collections have been received. The property tax folks were requesting for speed, ease, and modernization, that we establish a email for them to send to that is not specific to any one person. Bill handled that with IT. We've got reports@oakridgenc.com, or Oak Ridge, yeah, oakridgenc.com. And we're expecting the test on that to come this next month. We've already tested it, but they'll send the first set of reports out to that email address this next month. That goes in and immediately as backup, it blows the reports back out to my email, Bill's email, and Sandra's email. But we worked with Donna Bailey on that, and we're anticipating things will go fairly smooth. They're, they're really doing some good, good things with the tax department and collections over there. I'd already talked about the breakdown, the sales taxes and everything. Investments to depository banks, we've talked about that. Supported staff, the compliance work with ARPA, the SCIF grants. Bill's doing yeoman's job on that, and we're going to be working hard on some of the other grant work that's coming up. The audit was presented, and before I also come back to this request, but if you drop down to G, the current credit card, we have gotten the new cards in, they're in use. Sandra has checked everything that was a regular or recurring, that's a better way to phrase it, charge. Everything's been transferred, so we are pulling the trigger and plan to have those cards, old cards, all closed down. So that'll take care of that. Now, audit was presented tonight. The auditors made a recommendation to combine some Heritage Farm Park capital purchases that were paid for prior to the start of the Capital Project Fund. And if you remember, when we were going through the loan process and working, trying to get through LGC after a one-year delay, there was some leeway in there and some drag time before things got up. These expenses I've got detailed, we're basically going to amend the resolution because the way the funds work in governmental, you can't put more money into the fund or spend more money out of the fund for that asset than was approved in the ordinance. Due to that lead time, lead time, we had 85,344, which is some expenditures we had to have in order to do the construction. Primarily, we had 35,9 in well drilling. We had to have sufficient gallonage water to get the building permit by Guilford County. We had engineering of 30,100, which goes back to the water. The LGC application fee had to be paid for them to hear us, and then Terry ordered tables and trash cans because of the supply chain issues and pending rather steep increases. So all of that tied together is the 85,344. This is basically a housekeeping. These were already paid for, properly budgeted under capital expenditures. So this would essentially, this approval would modify the Capital Project Fund and have us in full compliance down to the dollar for everything that's gone through the Capital Projects Fund and/or is related to the Capital Projects Fund. So this is essentially a housekeeping item. And then the last one is a little bit of a modernization. We're already low on capitalization limits. $500 has been $500 because you've got an extremely conservative finance officer, and I don't agree with the state. They use a $50,000 limit. And I've told the story over the years, doesn't sound like a big problem with a big city until you go to pick up a weed eater that you realize an employee stole, and while you're there, you realize there sits a John Deere tractor and some other equipment and a few other things. And that's a true story of a municipality real close to us. They went to pick up a weed eater and found the John Deere tractor was missing. It was under $50,000. Nobody looked to even track it. We track our stuff really, really close. However, with inflation and time, $1,000 is what I'm asking council to approve a change in policy. Right now, unfortunately, in, in, in our day and age, $1,000 is really not that massive of an asset. And it comes to a point of accounting systems operate best when you have a benefit. The more time you spend on tracking things, the, the less efficient it is. Now, are we going to be striking off a bunch of stuff? Not really. Most of the things that we've got that are significant with the park, equipment-wise, they're all at least $1,000 and more. There's a few very small things, and there again, if somebody runs off with a $200 weed whacker, okay, usually most of those things are locked up and monitored. But as far as tracking, and, and we really have a trouble, you know, you can't really affix inventory tags to everything. So this would bring us up a little more in a more modern age, $1,000, and I hate to say it, $1,000 doesn't buy today what it used to buy years ago. So that's why I'm requesting this 500 increase to that limit. We would modify the policy that, of course, will be stated. It's a footnote back in that audit, 61 pages on the footnotes, there is a description of our capitalization procedures. And I'm pretty much, we are one of the lowest, if not the lowest, in the area on capitalization. But it also has another little bit of an added benefit that we have to balance out, which is having the ability to track our assets and to have those assets insured so that if something happens, we have records of those. So by having a fairly low depreciation limit, we also are generating that depreciation schedule that when something happens, a tree falls on the building or whatever, we've got a depreciation schedule, and yeah, and this year and this time, this was bought, built, or purchased, and we had paid this amount of money for it, and here's what the value is. And we've been very fortunate. We've never had a lot of insurance claims, but, you know, as we grow, as we get bigger, as we have more stuff going on, more people coming through, it's invariable, we will have some damage or we will have something that will be picked up. So I think this is a logical and reasonable request, and I would ask that you approve that as well as the housekeeping. I value the auditor's opinions very, very deeply, and they said, look, this would kind of be the best, best policy to kind of housekeep this and get it all together and increase that budget so that we're not in excess of the budgetary requirements.
Okay, so we need basically three motions. We need a motion to accept the finance officer's report. Let's get that out of the way. Is there a motion to accept the finance officer's report?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The second one is to, it's Resolution R. 2023-04?
Yes, we're amending the resolution. With it being a Capital Project Fund resolution, it spans fiscal years.
Okay, all right, then.
So this is referencing back to that original document.
So we need a resolution to amend the capital project, project budget ordinance for the Town of Oak Ridge revised December 5th, 2024. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the last one is authorization, authorization to amend the accounting policy for the Town of Oak Ridge to increase the capitalization limit to 1,000, from, to 1,000 from 500. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you go.
Thank you, G.
Yep.
Y'all take care.
All right, committee reports. And again, catch me if I skip over anybody. Water Advisory Committee, we had a detailed briefing from the Water Advisory Committee earlier today. Is there anything else we need to hear about? Okay. Historic Preservation Commission.
Good evening. The HPC met for its regularly scheduled meeting on October, or I'm sorry, November 20th. The HPC approved a COA for the demolition of a contributing structure, the HC Garner House located at 2204 Oak Ridge Road. The applicant has agreed to work with us to incorporate the house into his development plans. He has also agreed to help financially to move it to a suitable location if one can be found and there's an individual, if one can be found and there's an individual willing to move it. By the way, my name is Debbie Schoenfeld. I live at 8501 Sanser Farm Court. The book, the bibliography of the historic Oak Ridge book is being assembled, and it's, and it's also in the process of what I would consider its last edit. And then it will all be returned to our graphic designer, and hopefully we'll have it back soon, by the first of the year, maybe. Anyway, it looks so good. You can't even believe how good this book looks.
When will it be available?
That is true. I'm sorry?
When will it be available to the public?
Well, that's always a tough question. It's probably going to be available.
I mean, but it's general to spring.
You know, maybe spring, a little into summer, a little bit, but definitely the purchase will be before the end of this fiscal year.
Okay.
Any other questions? Planning and zoning? Anything from planning and zoning?
You, I could just report on them real quick. You actually voted on those two items tonight.
Okay. Mountain to the Sea?
We got that by email, didn't we?
That's right, that's right. We did get, we got an email update on Mountain Sea. Thanks for reminding me. Conservation Eastman?
Didn't meet.
Didn't meet. Special events? Special events, anybody?
Barb, are you reporting on special? Barb, are you reporting on special events?
Now, I'm reporting for Patty, so I hope I get her extra time. Here's her report.
Okay.
Barbara Engel, 8524 Rosedale Drive. Special events. Thanks to everyone for making our Veterans Honor, Honor Green grand opening such a success. It could not have been done without the help of Special Events Committee, the town staff, and council, our local scouts, and our wonderful community. Special thanks to Park and Rec for all their help at the grand opening. Thank you to John Hardester and Gary Blackwell for being our guest speakers. We look forward to working with the town on Phase Two. We currently have over $20,000 with the additional donation of 1,000 from Remilia Segal for sponsoring the Light Up the Night event. All money from Light Up the Night goes into the Veterans Fund. This is in addition to the 50,000 that the town council has approved in the 24-25 budget. Our Light Up the Night event is ready to go. It's this Saturday, so we hope to see all of you there. Special thanks to all the volunteers that came out in the freezing cold to set up the luminaries led by Amy and Brent Karikoff and Diana Macklin. It was cold, believe me. We are hoping to see all of you at this event, as we have something for everyone, including Grinch Tractor Ride, thanks to Kyle Anders, Letters to Santa, Central Baptist Church Choir, ORES Jumper, that's jump roping, Destination Arts Dance Ensemble, Hot Chocolate provided by Summit Church, free cookies provided by Lowe's Store, ORES Children's Choir, Santa and His Elves, Oak Ridge Presbyterian Choir with a Community Sing by the Tree, food vendors, which I think I have at least eight, and craft vendors, about 21, so come do your Christmas shopping. Special thanks to our local scouts for helping out wherever needed. Thank you. Any questions?
No, thank you. Great, great job.
Don't forget to come.
Recommittee?
Good evening. Roy Nidorf, 1815 Oak Ridge Road, Oak Ridge. Brock Donegan, Donegan has planted a dedication maple tree in the town park as well as two cherry trees, and the committee has continued to measure trees nominated for treasure tree status, which means these are specimens either of significant size, historic value, aesthetic structure, and good health. And the following species have been measured since our last report. and good health. And the following species have been measured since our last report: sycamore, dogwood, saucer magnolia, magnolia grandiflora, and red cedar. Thank you.
Thank you. Parks and Rec? We've seen you before, haven't we?
Adrian Nekronad, 5679 Timber Trace Way, co-chair Parks and Rec Board. Parks and Rec had our meeting on November 21st, in person and over Zoom. Brock reported, as was just kind of noted, of the planting of some new trees, as well as bushes, as well as ongoing pruning at the parks. ORYA has requested a six-month extension on the current contract to get that in alignment with the Oak Ridge Town Parks fiscal budget. There was a presentation by Families for Families 5K Fund Run. We reviewed and approved that. That will take place at noon on Saturday, December 21st, with the rain date of Sunday, the 22nd. The past three years, that event was held at Northwest High School, and their goal this year is to raise 400 pounds of canned food items for the Spartan Open Pantry at UNCG. There was also a presentation of sending smiles for a fundraiser for Flag Football Charity Tournament on Field One. We reviewed and approved that as well. That event has already occurred, took place November 22nd. There was discussion and review of the farmhouse community center, as we've already discussed tonight. I've got your, the comments, and we'll review that and send back as well. The park's security and networking project is now complete. Spectrum has gotten the installation complete of our internet at Heritage Farm Park. All camera angles have been reviewed and adjusted. We did some realignment on some of them to get the most optimal view out of all of those cameras. The music in the park series planning is still ongoing for 2025, with four of the six bands selected. And just again, to reiterate, for the Light of the Night is December 7th, with activities running from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m.
And it's really important to point out that the cameras did help the sheriff's department apprehend someone that did a smash and grab in the park.
They didn't apprehend him. They just know who he is.
They didn't apprehend him? I thought they, they just know who he is?
Yes.
Okay. Well, it's, it's good. It's providing information to the sheriff so they can act on it.
Yes.
So.
Excellent. And that was actually before the reassessment of cameras. We have, there was a couple cameras that were actually kind of overlapping shots, so I worked with them to move those out. So we now have shots, including shelters and other areas of the parking lot that were not being recorded before.
And just to remind you, the sheriff is who looks at these things.
That is correct. The sheriff has direct access. We, I was, I was involved only in that they would move it and send me a screenshot of what the camera looked like.
These aren't web cameras that you can log in and watch the park and things like that. I just want to keep reminding people that these are things that the sheriff will look at them to gather information. They're not under constant observation or anything like that.
Hundred percent.
It's episodic in that they will look when they, when they have a reason to look. Okay, so.
Yes, sir.
Finance committee, oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor, I just, I just wanted to say, we would not have been able to implement this camera program without Adrian's expertise.
Yes.
And so very much appreciated, not just the Parks and Rec co-chair, but also a IT consultant, that we very much appreciate his expertise.
Adrian's been involved since this was an idea. So he helped us flesh out the idea, the grant request to the county, and has been with us every step of the way. Thank you.
Now, we don't have anything from the finance committee, but we do need, what, an alternate? I think. Do we need an alternate for the finance committee?
We need to appoint someone to a regular space and also...
So if you're interested in serving on the finance committee, fill out application and submit one. I don't see anyone from the youth association here, or the military academy, or the elementary school, which brings us to another period of public comment. You're welcome to come up, state your name and address, and, whoops. I didn't even get to pick.
Caroline Rock, 1976 Beeson Road. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. One, I'm absolutely amazed at the amount of scrutiny that you all have put into the senior hours for the community farmhouse. It's overwhelming to me. I don't know if that's good or bad at this point, honestly. I, I just want you to understand, some of the discussion, some of your questions cannot be answered because this is not a discussion between Parks and Rec and you all. And it makes it frustrating, sitting on the sidelines, listening. These hours for our seniors' use are not offered at the exclusion of anyone else's use. These are, these hours are open to everyone else. Seniors don't get first dibs, just like any other citizen doesn't get dibs over the seniors. I want you to remember that. So whether it's 8:00 to 2:00 or 8:00 to 5:00, it really doesn't matter. Seniors don't have any more, you know, opportunity than anyone else. We are actually limiting seniors. So it seemed there was such a huge concern about limiting seniors. We have limited them. That was the limitation. It wasn't to give them more time. It was limiting their time for the, for the free hours, but not at the exclusion of anyone else. Everybody has equal opportunity. Also, I want to, to make it clear that I don't really think it matters whether a grandmother is reserving this for her female other senior friends for a knitting class, or if she's reserving it for a personal family event that is going to include her children that are not senior citizens. That, to me, should not be something that we try to oversee and navigate, that you can only have seniors at your senior reservation of two hours. I think this is, that's overkill. I think this is a perk we give to the senior community. And just like we're not going to go in and hassle somebody about whether they're sneaking in a bottle of wine when they're not supposed to have alcohol, we cannot police everything that somebody does. And the question about why we aren't offering this before 8:00 in the morning is specifically per the request of our Parks and, Parks staff. They, they have to have time. So let's say an event went on until 10:00 Saturday night, because they can use this facility until 10:00, or Sunday night. It doesn't matter. Whenever it's offered till 10:00. We don't currently employ Parks staff to come in after 10:00 at night to do anything in our parks. So therefore, they will have to have that time in the morning when they come in to make sure it's ready to be used by 8:00. So that may answer your question with that. To work out earlier times than 8:00 would require getting with our Parks staff to see if that would actually be possible in some way. Anyway, that, that's it on that. I wanted to clarify some of that so that you could have that in your mind. Also, my special events hat. I would love to see all of you guys come out for Light Up the Night, Saturday night. Special Events is a really small group that does this entire all-day event. It's a lot of hard work, putting out the luminaries, and then planning the whole event, which so many of our committee members have worked so hard on. It would be great to see all of our council members show up at some point to support this big town event. This is probably our biggest event of the year. So it'd be great to have y'all come out. Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Frank Carroll, 1389 Forsyth Road, Kernersville. Just to comment on your pornography viewing discussion, you made a comment coming from the council that the Wi-Fi network across, across the street is not your problem. It's not, and it is not covered in that, in that policy. Probably should be. That networks should be covered in that policy. Because the trick is, is that you go to a hotel, and you sign onto the hotel Wi-Fi. One of the things you'll check, you'll check Terms and Conditions box. Nobody reads them, but you check it. Within that Terms and Conditions, it says you may not do criminal activity, child porn, whatever it is. I can connect to that network, do whatever I want. Your policy done, covered. I would argue that that's probably a hole in your policy that needs to be filled. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else to speak, wish to speak? Yes? Who's this guy?
Adrian Nekronad, 5679 Timber Trace Way. Just a public comment, actually, to follow up to that. I'm actually very familiar with the Necron equipment that's being used at Oak Ridge Town Parks. That would be very easy to implement a policy such as that. I do that. I use the same equipment. So should, just for your consideration, there'd be no heroic efforts or even cost if you chose to implement such restrictions on the policy networking that you have at the, that's now been extended at Heritage Farm Park.
That's good to know. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? If not, we'll move on to council comments. Mr. Greason?
No comments.
Mr. Stone?
So heard from a lot of people about the Transco Williams thing. I know they don't want to hear this, but the, the reality of it is, is that we don't have any authority in a federal infrastructure project. That being said, I would ask the council and Mr. Bruce and Mr. Thomas, could we offer to allow, if they want, Transco Williams to use the town hall for a citizens informational meeting? If they decide to meet, great. If they decide not to, fine. It would be up to them. But either way, we've done what I believe, and I may be ignorant on this, but we would have done everything that we as a council could do. So just a thought. That being said, it was mentioned earlier that the Water Advisory Committee met with the council today. Very informative. They've got, boy, a lot of data, a lot of information. They really do some good work. Along those lines, there are some delays in getting bids for the parts of the system. And because of the water project, we've been delaying discussions on Heritage Farm Park, Sports Courts complex. With the water delays, I look forward to starting the discussion on the sports courts in January. It's a great timing, since that'll be just one month and some weeks, let's say six weeks before the, the CIP meeting. So I think it'd be a good kickoff for us to, to start having those conversations. Last thing, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Mr. Harton?
Sure. I'll echo the, I hope you all have a Merry Christmas. The New Year's coming up. And with that, I would just like to indicate that to me, tonight is, I guess, the end and the beginning of my first term, first year's on my term as town council. Greason and I laugh at each other because it's roughly 1,100 more days, Mike, that we, that we have our term.
Thirty-five more minutes.
But who's, but who's counting, right? But I do want to thank the staff, the committees, and the chairs that do such important work for our town. Many thanks to Sam for his valuable financial reporting and analysis, to Michael Thomas for keeping us on the legal highway and out of the ditch. So thanks to all of you that support us. I think Councilman Greason would agree that for both of us, it's been a year of learning. Most of that has been on the job. So I think he would agree that we still have a lot to learn as we move into 2025. During the past year, I think we've made some good progress on some issues. Certainly, the advancements made on municipal water have been frankly extraordinary, and the opening of Heritage Farm Park and the Veterans Honor Green in particular are probably great examples of this project, of the, this progress. We've been able to keep other projects moving forward, even though we may not have been totally united as a council, but I think that's to be expected. We've also had some stumblings, so there's a lot of room for improvement. Coming out of the, coming out of the, the beginning of the year, we had our issues with disparaging comments. And I think last, the last council, I do not think we demonstrated good listening skills, which I think is one of our most important roles. I always learned in my management experience that gaining input before decision-making should be expected of any leader. So tonight, we launch into year two of this town council. I think we have much to improve the next 12 months, and I hope that we can raise the bar to meet your expectations and keep your trust. Again, Merry Christmas. See you in 2025.
Ms. Snyder?
Thank you. Thanks to everyone for being here tonight. It's another long meeting. And I do appreciate all who spoke, and I know many of them aren't here at this point. I agree that we've got, we've gone through some stumbling this year. We've got some progress to make. I really would like us to see, to spend more time on moving Oak Ridge forward and less time on endless discussions. I'd like to look at engaging our community more. And by holding meetings that go on like this, it's, it's difficult to get people more involved. I'd like to look at developing our town core more as a priority, and as our top priority, moving municipal water forward. This month, we have been very busy on special events, planning Light Up the Night. I'm so grateful for everyone who makes this event possible. This year especially, it was just slow-going out there. Remember that the town tree and the 1,400 luminaries will remain lit through the end of December, so you can visit as often as you like, but please come join us this Saturday. I, I think I've reported on some of this, but I've attended several meetings with the League of Municipalities recently. Most recently, I attended a webinar yesterday about the issues surrounding extrat- extraterritorial jurisdiction. And I want to share what I learned with the rest of council and with staff. I also attended the league's new Commit to Civility training session. And as I mentioned a few years ago, a few months ago, if 75% of our council attends this training, and we all sign a civility pledge, we'll be recognized by the league. So I once again invite my fellow council members to attend one of these sessions. And I've continued to be really involved with the scouts, and I'm so proud when I see them move forward and complete their badges. And Merry Christmas, joyous Hanukkah, and happy holidays to everyone. Thank you.
As to the pipeline thing, the Sierra Club, I believe, is already going to be hailing, holding one of their information sessions here. So pretty much any organization that wants to use this for non-commercial use can avail themselves at town halls. So if Transco wanted to give an informational session, I don't see any impediment to that. Definitely, you know, our staff, I jokingly say about Sam being boring, that's a good thing. We basically have a no drama staff. The staff does an amazing job. You know, they, they keep us well-informed. They keep us running, keep the town running really well. So our council manager, former government, I believe, is working very effectively. As always, there's a, it's, it's the holiday season, which means we have, we have Christmas, we have Hanukkah, we have the New Year. We just had Thanksgiving. There's any number of other religions that have holidays between now and January. So it's a great time to think about giving blood. So if you're able to give blood, this Monday at the Methodist Church, there will be a blood drive. They give away gift cards. I try my best to have some cookies or treats that I bake. Bob Yarborough does a great job of, of providing treats. So if you're able to give blood, please do. I am no longer able to give blood. So that's why I'm, I try really hard to get other people to give in my, in my place. And I know Mr. Harton gives when he can, so I think that's great. Again, we have Light Up the Night. Make sure you get out there. We have activities from, what, about 2:00 in the afternoon till 7:00. So make sure you're out there. There's lots of things going on. We have several of the choirs, and there's food, there's crafts. So definitely find time to go over there. You don't have to go over there the whole day if you don't want to. Go there for an hour, but it's there from, you know, 2:00 to 7:00. So take advantage of that. I agree that we, we originally had hoped we'd have some water information by now that would help us make some financial decisions. But I think we definitely wouldn't take a hard look at what we should do and move forward with basically phase two of the park, not, not the Honor Green, but phase two of the park, which is the court solution. So we should take a close look at that. And as far as the youth, youth agreements goes, we are taking a, we're, we're, we're planning on taking a fresh look at how we do those things. So I think we'll, we're, we're, we'll see what's going there. So again... I think we'll, we're, we're, we'll see what's going there. So again, have a great Christmas, a great Hanukkah, a great New Year. And thanks again for all your support. We appreciate it. Any other comments quickly? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I was gonna say, we don't want to adjourn. Is there a second?
I can.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed.